Good evening, would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance of the General Committee meeting?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the glory of this day and the opportunity to be of service to this community. We are grateful for all of the administrators and teachers who are going the extra mile for students this summer. Because of their efforts, students are performing, practicing, guiding, learning, and progressing each day. Also, Father, be with those who are returning to classrooms themselves so that their performances in our classrooms this year will be enhanced. We are grateful for their dedication as well. All of these things we pray in your name.
Amen.
Mr. Egan, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fote.
Mrs. Aceveda?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft is not with us. Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Disar?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Dr. Lewis is not with us. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Fote. Before we go on to the agenda items at this time, I just would like to recognize a visitor tonight. We have Jason Brown with the St. Bernard Voice. He will now be reporting for the St. Bernard Parish School Board in the St. Bernard Voice. Welcome. Okay. First item on the agenda is update, I'm sorry, super news with Ms. Alex Schneider. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. It's been a busy month, and I am very excited to share this month's super news. Before I do so, I'd like to highlight a couple of important community events coming up. The first is going to be the Performing Arts Academy's performance of "The Little Mermaid." I had the opportunity to see a sneak peek this afternoon. It was beautiful. It promises to be another exceptional performance for our students and families who are able to attend. This year, tickets are being sold online, and you can gain access to that tickets through the tickets on our school website, but they are going fast. So as of this evening, eighty percent of opening night has already sold out, and for the first weekend, about fifty percent of the tickets have already sold. So if you are interested in attending "The Little Mermaid," I do urge you to get online quickly and reserve your tickets. The second big news for this month is the MOMA Center opening, the planetarium to the public. So we've had two days. We opened on Saturday, and we opened yesterday, and have already had about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty people join us to see shows at the planetarium, all with glowing reviews. So that has been a really great thing for our community and for our families, and I'm very excited to share that news with you. Well, that will do it for this month. Let's take a look back at our super news.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
Hello, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lemoine, and welcome to this edition of super news. We'll start things off with a look back, as some of our students achieved important milestones in their young lives: graduation. This year, four hundred and twenty-five Shamet High School graduates received their diplomas at the University of New Orleans Lakefront Arena. One of the most accomplished classes in school history, the Shamet High School Class of 2017 earned over twelve million dollars in scholarships, and nearly half of them earned college credit during that time in high school. Also of note is that nearly seventy-five percent of the graduating class earned an industry-based certificate. This year's class also boasted a national merit finalist, a McDonald's Parade All-American, and thirteen individual and team district championships. What a great year for the Owls! Our younger students also celebrated the end of their time in kindergarten, fifth grade, and eighth grade. Ceremonies occurred throughout the district to celebrate all that these students have accomplished and recognize the importance of the transition into middle and high schools.
Speaking of celebrating accomplishments, last month, Dr. Brian Bertuzzi, St. Bernard Parish Coroner, presented over a hundred reading and writing awards to parish public school students. Students, grades K through twelve, were acknowledged for their outstanding efforts in reading and writing during the school year, and were presented in a special ceremony at the Shamet High School Cultural Arts Center.
You can teach, you can inspire, you can create things to make a better, more beautiful world for yourself and those around you.
Other students making a splash were those first through fifth grade students taking swimming lessons this summer, learning the basics of swimming and water safety. You know, between our second grade swim program and our middle and high school swimming teams, it seems that there's always students in our Shamet High School Olympic-style swimming pool.
And speaking of water, rehearsals are underway for the Performing Arts Academy upcoming performance of "The Little Mermaid." Over a hundred and twenty students are participating in this year's performance, which promises to be a magical journey under the sea. And this year, audiences can purchase tickets online by visiting our school district's website.
Hey, Alex, instead of a standing ovation, guess what the audiences will do at the end of "The Little Mermaid"?
The wave?
Exactly. In other news to celebrate, the Methodist School-Based Health Center located on the Shamet High School campus has been touted as a premier school-based health center. Over its ten years of service, its clinic has seen over thirteen thousand students and had nearly seventy thousand visits, which averages to be about fifty students per day. This clinic is truly a great asset to our school community.
The culture that they have developed is that the kids know them and enjoy them and want to go to them when they have a problem. So I thank them very much for that.
And now, we'll go from medicine to money, as we are proud to announce that our financial department has once again received certificates of excellence for financial reporting from multiple agencies. The business office has received these awards for over two decades and continues to lead the state in our fiscal integrity and high-quality reporting.
It's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment. Congratulations for having satisfied the high standards of the program.
And while David Fernandez and his staff were winning financial awards, thirty Special Olympians from St. Bernard Parish competed at the Louisiana State Summer Special Olympic Games, bringing home a number of medals. These athletes qualified in March to compete in the state games held on the campus of Southeastern Louisiana University. The team received fifty-three awards, which included seventeen gold medals, eighteen silver medals, five rhine medals, eleven fourth-place finishes, and two fifth-place winners. St. Bernard Parish School System has proudly participated in Special Olympics for decades, and this year was recognized by the State of Louisiana as having a Special Olympics program of distinction.
More importantly, how they represent St. Bernard Parish as just truly wonderful young people, and we get nothing but praise from people in other parts of the state.
Also bringing pride to the parish were the Beta Club students from Smith Elementary, who are headed to Disney World for the National Beta Competition. Students will be interacting with other junior Beta Club members from across the nation to enhance their leadership skills, share service ideas, and develop lifelong relationships. We wish them the best of luck.
Also representing the best in brain power were the members of our St. Bernard Parish Academic Games Team, who recently competed in Wheeling, West Virginia, at the national tournament. Our students competed against over two thousand students from across the nation and took home many awards this year. Special thanks to Shamet Refining, PBF Energy, the school district's corporate sponsor that makes the local and national tournaments possible. Now let's take a quick look at this year's winners.
And now, it's time for Teacher Feature, as presented by the members of the St. Bernard Parish School Board.
Today, we salute Michelle Folen of Raleigh Alternative. Ms. Folen has a tremendous work ethic and is constantly thinking of new and creative ways to engage students and facilitate their growth, both in and out of the classroom. She is truly a blessing for our Raleigh students. Would also like to pay homage to Assistant Principal at Davies Elementary Tiffany Glapion. A dedicated and conscientious educator, she is committed to providing the best educational opportunities for all of her students. As a former kindergarten teacher, she uses those same nurturing, positive attributes to create a school climate that is conducive to teaching and learning. She truly evokes Pelican and parish pride.
We'd also like to recognize Ms. Melissa Collins from Lacoste Elementary School. She is well-versed in the first-grade curriculum and is a true expert in her field. Her parents and students love Ms. Collins, and the rapport that she has with both parents and students is exemplary. Two of my grandchildren had Ms. Collins, and she, I can say from a personal standpoint, is an excellent teacher. We also pay tribute to another member of the Lacoste family, Beverly Brumfield. Ms. Bev makes every day brighter with her friendly and selfless attitude. Ms. Beverly is caring and will do anything for anyone.
Would also like to honor an outstanding teacher at Smith Elementary, Jody Crefassi. Ms. Crefassi teaches second grade at Smith and works diligently with classroom teachers, students, and parents to do all that she can to help her students become lifelong learners and better people. She is truly an asset to the Smith family, and as Mr. Campbell would say, "I taught her."
We also salute the Araby Elementary Teacher of the Year, Caitlin Lott, who stands out for a number of reasons. Her dedication is remarkable as she prepares rigorous, exciting lessons for her second graders. Caitlin's students benefit from her enthusiasm for learning, which is evident in every lesson. Every minute in Caitlin's classroom is a teachable moment.
But we're looking for adjectives to add.
Incredible.
Daddy.
Incredible.
Incredible.
So I'd rather, I like that one. So we're gonna add that adjective for him. We're gonna add the word incredible.
Well, that would just about do it for this edition of super news, but before we go, we wanted to share some exciting news. Starting this month, the public can enjoy our school district's amazing planetarium. We have four incredible shows that audiences, young and old, will appreciate. Show dates are below, and tickets can be purchased in advance at the MOMA Center. More information about the planetarium shows and ticket information can be found by visiting our district website. Come check it out. The planetarium is out of this world.
Thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you again in August here on super news, where we always let the super news roll.
We'll see you next time.
We appreciate the super news, and we have so many exciting things going on in our school system, and we thank you for presenting that tonight. Anyone have anything to add, Ms. Fote?
I just want to say, I was there Saturday morning for the opening shows of the planetarium when the public was first able to come. You know, it's been open for quite a period of time for our own kids to go during the course of the year, and I think what is unique about the experience for our students is that Ms. Gina Aceveda, who runs the planetarium, who's the director, is just a wonderful science teacher who has written the lessons in conjunction with the next-generation science standards. So when our children go in, it's not just, "Well, let's go in and watch a little show in there and see the wonders of the planets or the stars," or whatever activity they're going to do. There is a pre-experience lesson that they do in their classrooms to prepare for that experience. They come, they see the show, and then there's a post-experience as well. So that goes on all during the school year, where we're making that available to all of our students, pre-kindergarten all the way through, who will experience that at least once a year in conjunction with their science lessons. But this new feature that we're doing, we're opening it to the public, where the community members, parents can bring their children, grandparents can come with them, and experience, I think, the wonders, I think we all love, to sit there and watch those shows. I brought six of the little ones in my family Saturday morning to see it, and they were totally enthralled by the experience. Alex was there as well to help out. David Fernandez had come over to make sure everything was running well for Ms. Aceveda. Her husband was there, her daughter-in-law, so we had a whole lot of people who were there helping to make the experience wonderful for the community, and I think people were in awe. We had just tremendous amounts of, you know, good things that were being said about it. So we have the dates that were shown on the screen for the remainder of June. The July calendar will be coming out soon, so people can come all during the month of July. And then during the course of the school year, we're going to have a few Saturday shows and maybe experiment in an evening and work through to make sure that community members can feel that it is available to them and their families, while most of the time during the day, it'll be reserved for the schoolchildren in conjunction with their science classes.
Thank you, Ms. Fote. Mr. Gaines?
I just wanted to say, I went Monday afternoon, and I went and saw the oasis in space, and what I really liked about Ms. Aceveda, in the beginning part, her introduction, she would engage the kids in the audience, you know, reinforce those things they have learned in the science classroom, which I thought was amazing. You know, summer is when you have amnesia, you know, everything's, you know, and you lose everything, and you know, but at least she's trying to keep reinforcing those science principles during the summer months, so I applaud her for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Anyone else?
Mr. Warner?
Yeah, Alex, are you tracking on Facebook the positive feedback that we're getting, and can you maybe follow up with us?
Sure, I can print out some of the comments. The initial post that went out on Facebook about a week and a half ago informing the public that the center was being opened was seen, as of last Friday, by over twenty-five thousand people with two-hundred-and-eighty-five shares, which essentially means that two-hundred-and-eighty-five people saw the post and reshared it on their own.
Right.
And the feedback had been overwhelmingly positive about people just being very excited that this was open. I saw a lot of people, you know, if you're familiar with Facebook, you'll know that you can tag someone, and so essentially, people were saying, "Hey, you know, Mary Jane, this would be a great thing for you to do with the kids next Saturday."
Right.
And so it was just, it blew up very quickly from there. But I'll print those out and bring them to the board.
Great. Amazing, you know, the value. We're not in school right now, but yeah, we have a major production on a play.
Yep.
A planetarium that's open, swimming lessons. I mean, it's just incredible, the value that our system offers. Thank you very much.
And along with that, Mr. Warner, the, I guess last Wednesday was it, when I did the morning show on Fox Eight? And just talked a little bit about the opening of the planetarium, and when I was there Saturday morning, we had at least three families who came in, really from outside of St. Bernard, that said, "I saw you on the show, on that morning show during the week, and thought it would be great to bring my grandchild with us," or, and one was bringing their own children, that family. So the outreach was there. So we, and the cameraman in the, for the morning show, looked at me when I was leaving. He said, "That's open to everybody?" I said, "Yeah, you can come." He said, "I love planetariums. I'll be there." So we, I think the cameraman is also coming. It's really, really good, and it's a state-of-the-art planetarium produced by the Spitz people, which are the major consultants around the world for state-of-the-art planetariums. So this is a really first-class operation.
WTSU also had a little plug for us. I saw it earlier, so.
We've also gotten several phone calls today and yesterday from day camps, who, Lenox and some different day camps are looking to bring their schoolchildren, who are also very, very excited about the planetarium opening. So it's going very well.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you again. We appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is an education item. Mr. Gaines?
We have a report on E-Rate and technology. Mr. Brown?
Good evening. So I was asked to come before you tonight to give you an update on where we stand as a district in terms of our E-Rate application for the upcoming funding year, as well as technology abroad for the district. So I'm gonna start with E-Rate. Just real quickly, an overview, this is a federal program that is available for schools and libraries, and based upon your free and reduced lunch count, you can receive a discount on your telecommunications bills based upon your free and reduced lunch, being the maximum, being ninety percent of your bill could be covered by this program. Currently, Cox Communication has our contract for our telecommunications services district-wide. This includes all data lines from the schools to central office. It also includes from central office to the internet, and it also includes our phone services at each one of our sites. The contract with Cox is originally a three-year contract that began in 2016, will end in 2019, with two additional voluntary extensions, which could extend Cox's contract to 2021. For this coming school year, Miro has been added, so as this point, all of our school facilities will be on our E-Rate application. We are at ninety percent funding, which means that we will receive up to ninety percent of discount on our telecommunications services. So far this year, for our application on the upcoming school year, our pre-discounted amount, which means what we would normally spend had this program not been in place, is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Of that, we're expecting E-Rate to pay a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-one, leaving us to pay sixteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. So you can see, this program is a huge benefit to us as a school district. So for technology, currently, I'm gonna just throw out some statistics. You don't have to memorize these. I promise I won't quiz you on them. We have three thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-eight desktop computers in classrooms and in labs and in libraries. We have six hundred teacher laptops, eight hundred iPads, sixteen hundred Chromebooks. As well as the other technology that you know that when you walk the buildings, you see, there's printers in every classroom, there's a Promethean board in every classroom. Last summer, the Technology Committee met, and we looked over our annual technology replacement plan, and it was decided that over the summer last year, we would replace Promethean projectors at the ninth-grade academy, the three middle schools, Raleigh and Smith. This is an important endeavor because the projectors on those Promethean boards are only slated to last about five years, and even when you put in a new bulb, these projectors still remain dim because the lifespan of the projector is based upon hours of use and not the life of itself. So they will have to be replaced. Last year, last summer, we also upgraded the wireless at the three middle schools, placing an access point in each classroom. So this is a huge endeavor. As we look towards putting more mobile devices in the schools and in the classrooms, this becomes a necessary thing. Whereas before, we had coverage, meaning that you could walk the building with a device, and you could get wireless access pretty much anywhere you went, but you couldn't focus thirty kids at one time in one area because it was designed for coverage and not necessarily for load. So we are now taking our schools a step forward into the future, and we are upgrading for load and not just for coverage. We also replaced two-hundred-and-sixty desktops that were in need of repair, and we replaced sixty teacher laptops. In the next week, the Technology Committee meeting will meet again to discuss the upcoming technology replacement plan for the new school year. It is hoped that we will replace projectors at Araby, Shamet Elementary, Lacoste, and Goche, and that would complete the complete cycle of replacement of projectors between last summer and this summer. Every school will have a functioning, bright, new projector. We're also looking to upgrade the wireless at all elementary schools and Raleigh. And additionally, we're hoping to replace seventy-five teacher laptops. In addition, right now, we are currently in the purchasing process of purchasing twenty-five-hundred Chromebooks that will be spread across the district in the following way. There will be one cart in every fifth-grade classroom. There will be one cart in every sixth-through-eighth ELA classroom, science classroom, and social studies classroom, and there will be one cart in every EOC classroom. This is important because this will allow these students to have daily access to technology, i.e. computer, internet, for practicing for online testing, for doing authentic research, and authentic classroom-based projects. Having those devices in the classroom makes it ready, readily available, and easy to use. Hence is another reason why we've had to upgrade our wireless internet, because if we're going to put thirty Chromebooks in a classroom, we need to have an internet access that's going to allow us the capacity for thirty Chromebooks in a classroom. I want to point out to you that between the Chromebooks we purchased over the last two years and the Chromebooks we'll purchase this summer, we are at a two-to-one ratio, meaning that for every Chromebook, for every two students, there's a Chromebook. So we are quickly approaching a one-to-one ratio, which is the highest standard across the nation. On June first and June second, twenty-eight teachers, teacher leaders, and a handful of supervisors received Google Level One training. Now, this was a two-day boot camp, as it's called, and trust me, it was a boot camp. And what we did was, we learned all about the Google products. Google makes their own form of Word, PowerPoint, Excel, but the benefit about it is that we don't need flash drives and we don't need hard drives, because with your Google account, I can create a spreadsheet that goes all of the figures, let's say, all the money we spent this year, the budget for the school system. And I can log into a computer in New York with my account and pull up that spreadsheet without having a flash drive or a laptop that has it stored on it. I can also share that document with another individual, and if that individual makes a change, I see that change instantly and immediately. The benefit for that in the classroom is, two students can be working collaboratively on a story. I write the story, and I share it with you, and then you, in turn, give me your feedback. You can put comments. "I like this." "You missed a question mark here. You didn't spell this correctly." And I see that real time, that there's no lag time. I see, when you type it, I see it. So this is gonna allow kids to collaborate with one another, real time. This is something that kids will be expected to do when they leave us and into the real world. So it was important for these twenty-eight teachers to receive this training. On the week of June fifth, the following week, those twenty-eight teachers were scheduled to take a three-hour exam for that Level One certification. So we received two days of training, we come back the following week, and we sit down and take a three-hour exam on what it is we've learned. The ultimate goal, the ultimate goal is to make these twenty-eight people Google-certified retrainers, which is a very significant thing nationally. It's not easily earned, but it's recognizable nationally. So these twenty-eight individuals, sometime in the fall, will take Level Two certification, which is another two-day training. And then towards the end of the school year, when all of that information has a chance to soak in, those twenty-eight individuals will take the last day, which is train the trainer. The end result is those twenty-eight individuals will be nationally certified to retrain others on how to use the Google products. The benefit being is that these teachers can now go back to these schools and retrain our teachers and be certified to do so. So that's all I have for you at this time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brown. I've just-
Well, thank you, Mr. Brown. I'm just, I'm smiling here and here because, first off, when in my former life, I used Google products in my classroom. My, Mr. Warner was foresight enough to let, allow me to do that. And I was using Google Docs, Google Spreadsheets and everything back in 2008 through my retirement. It's wonderful, wonderful, sweet. I'm glad that we finally have access to that and teachers being trained in that. It's awesome. The other thing is, I'm flashbacking to 20 years ago. 1997, I was standing right there presenting E-Rate for the first time to the school district. So here I am, sitting here, listening to Mr. Brown talking about, it is an important program. It funds 90% of our Internet access, and it's amazing. So thank you again, Mr. Brown, for maintaining that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or concerns or?
Just a quick question. And E-Rate is great. I mean, the benefit to our school district is unbelievable, and we're very blessed to have, have continued that, had it continued, rather. But the question I have, the 28 teachers who were chosen, how did, how were they chosen to become nationally certified? And then I realize they're gonna come back to our, the teachers at each of the schools and then train them. But how were those 28?
These individuals were picked by the elementary and secondary supervisor because these individuals are heavily involved with the writing of curriculum. And as we know, if we want these products and we want these devices to be used, it's extremely important that it be embedded in the curriculum. It's one thing for me to give you 30 Chromebooks and say, "Have at it and have a good time." But it's more likely to see effective use if I put it in the curriculum and say, "At the end of Unit 1, here's a Google activity that you need to do with your kids so that they can practice the skills." These are lifelong skills we're talking about. So these individuals have knowledge of the curriculum, and that's how they were selected.
They're primarily at the elementary level, the fourth and fifth-grade teacher leaders. So they will go back and train eventually the elementary teachers on their campuses, who are gonna become more involved. And then at the middle and high school level, the instructional coaches will perform that same function. Then from our central office staff, our curriculum coordinators, the ones that, as Mr. Brown is talking about, primarily write curriculum model lessons and train teachers district-wide in many of the PD-type activities. So these are the actual teacher leaders and instructional coaches at the school level and at our central office level. With the online state testing, which is mandated in grades five and up, we found the reason that we're going to do such a heavy investment in the Chromebooks is because it's a very economical way to get those in the hands of, of kids. It's much less expensive than, say, a laptop is. Much more mobile, much more, I guess, easily user-friendly, I guess, for kids, if you wanna put it that way. So that, to get kids used to operating those and taking assessments, especially at the fifth-grade level, we want those fifth graders to really experience, experience that on a daily and weekly basis, a continual basis, prior to them having to come at the end of the school year and actually take the assessment on it. So they will be able to take the state assessment on those Google Chromebooks as well, that they're practicing on all year. And the same thing in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then we're going to see, as we develop those skills, as far down as we'll be able to bring them at the elementary level. So it's a, it's a major initiative that, as Mr. Brown has outlined, it has a, a testing or a state assessment implication where the kids really have to get familiar with that. Sometimes, you know, I guess, old people like us, when we were so used to paper and pencil type things, and you go to computerized even testing, sometimes to maneuver through it and flip back and forth may be difficult when you're not used to doing it. So as kids now are coming up, that's the norm for them. But they've got to be, they've got to be used to doing the typing in. All of these statewide assessments are timed. So when they have to go in and type in essays, constructed responses, and show what they can do, sometimes it's an impediment if they're not used to actually doing that on a daily basis. Just the idea of writing essays on the computer and dragging and flipping and doing all the things that they have to do to be effective in a timed environment, they've got to be comfortable doing it, so.
You know, and the, the other thing too is, we have a generation now that's constantly on their cellphones and, and the browser, the browser that the Chromebook affords, you know, that's what they live in, you know. So they're very comfortable. It's a natural thing for students, go head into a browser. And it's so, Chromebooks, which is the neat thing about Chromebooks, and when I was sitting in Mr. Brown's shoes, what we had a problem with, with computers is we couldn't lock them down. You know, students would download all sorts of strange things and so, you know, viruses or games, whatever they wanna download. But with a Chromebook, you can limit that because it's only in a browser. So it's, it's environment, it's a very limited environment, but it's enough for students to learn it. They could do word processing, they could do spreadsheets. They could do all the necessary things they have to do. Programming even, you could do coding in a browser now, with code.org. So those things, Chromebook's an awesome thing for school systems around the country. They're purchasing them like crazy. And the cost, I mean, under $300 apiece, you could get a, a great Chromebook. So I applaud the administration for going into 101 because that's where I wanna see our district. I want, this is my philosophy, it's always been my philosophy. I hate being in the middle of the pack. I wanna be in the front of the pack, leading the state. And that's the way I've always felt. That's the way I did business years ago. So, thank you, Mr. Brown.
You're welcome.
One more question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Long.
Okay. Mr. Brown, thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that you could actually have access to, say, the budget for the school system. I guess my question is, will there be protections for confidential information?
Well, and that was strictly an example. But, yes. There are, as Mr. Gaines pointed out, the backend of the, of the product has an administrative console. And there's a lot of locking down and a lot of visual capabilities. For example, if two students are sharing a document and they're commenting with one another, as the teacher, I'm capable of going back and seeing the trail of those comments between the two of you. So if so-and-so comes up to me and says, "He wrote me this," and he denies it, well, there's no, there's no way of getting around it because the teacher can pull it up and says, "Well, right here, at this time, you said this." So there's a lot of backend security, absolutely.
Okay, great. Great. Because we wouldn't want people to have access to records, medical records or personnel records and things like that.
Correct. And the only, well, the reason that we've held off on going as big as we are this year is because for a couple of years now, Google has refrained from signing the privacy agreement with the state of Louisiana, which made it less of, less efficient. It was basically going to be just an Internet browser in a box. Since they have decided to sign the agreement, we have complete confidence in our privacy of our students' information. We are now able to use the product for what it really can do, including Internet browsing, but all the other things as well. So we do have a privacy agreement with the state and Google.
Okay, good. Thank you.
But also talk about, as our students access the Internet, what they have to go through in our firewall and the protections that they can't just access whatever they feel like.
That's correct. That's correct. We have, we have a firewall. We also have a content filter. So a child can't just type in anything they want to and go anywhere they want. You know, we block pornography, we block blog sites, so on and so forth. And the advantage of the Chromebooks is that I can also take a select grade level, and I can even filter it down to a classroom. And I can say, "This particular class is blocked from going anywhere on the Internet except for these four sites." We're also gonna install a product called Land School, which will allow the teacher to see what all the kids are doing, all 30 kids are doing on their Chromebooks at one time from one computer. And that teacher will have the capability also. This product allows the teacher to say, "You cannot go to any site except for these sites today." So when the kid tries to go somewhere else, based on this program, it's gonna block them from going. So the teacher's gonna have a lot more granular control of what the kids are doing, at the same time being able to see what the kids are doing.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
I have another question. I'm thinking, thinking back of why I set up my classroom for Google. Would teachers be able to set up their email accounts, or will that be done on a, on a school-site basis? Because, you know, are you gonna have one domain handling all emails, or you'd have each school having a domain to handle the emails and the accounts for students?
Okay. Currently, right now, we have one domain. And we have decided that for email purposes, we would hold off until we rule this out this year, to get our feet really wet and to kind of fine-tune the devices and the controls that we need to get a handle on first. And then we'll come back and look at the mail system. So for this upcoming year, we're holding off on the mail.
I understand. Okay, just, just a point of information, Chalmers High has a domain already set up for Google if you wanna use that. It's in City-Dormant, but it's there.
Okay. All right. Good to know. Good to know.
Your chair.
Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Do the students have access to our Wi-Fi on, on their phones while they're in our schools?
They have very limited access to the Wi-Fi on the school. There is a guest, there are two accounts when you walk into our school building. One account that you will see if you pull up your phone. It's called the guest account. It's an extremely, extremely slow Internet access. So a student who is trying to use that guest account is not going to be very happy with what they're experiencing. There's also a hidden account that you have to know what to type in to get to it. And you have to know the extremely lengthy, complicated password in order for you to get access to the real Internet access, which is the high-speed Internet access. So to answer your question, yes, they can, but it's a miserable experience.
So they can't, you know, make recordings and upload them to Facebook or?
Facebook should, is, Facebook is blocked at every school. So they should not be accessing Facebook on school. Now, unless they're using their 3G, which we can't control that.
Right, I understand.
Yeah. But if they're on our Internet access.
If they're using our website.
Facebook is, is, Facebook is blocked.
Snapchatting each other and texting each other.
Correct. Correct. Thank you. You're welcome.
I'd like to piggyback on that. The sad reality is, even though we have these protections with Wi-Fi, students have cellular data. And they can actually just turn off the Wi-Fi and go into cellular data and get Facebook on their cellphones. So, I mean, that's the sad fact of life. But I just wanna point that out.
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item?
Granberry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. Got a little update on the changes of the personnel. A report on it.
Yeah, we keep moving along. Gain a couple, lose a couple. It's the process. That's the process.
Mr. Granberry.
Yes.
Mr. Granberry, I, I, you made the comment, you gain a couple, you lose a couple. All the, which is, we could, we see with resignations, it's a continual effort, and we appreciate all your hard work. But at this point, are all the teacher positions filled, or you still have some openings?
We still have some openings.
So you're still interviewing?
Preschool's filled. It's taken care of. We have some elementary, a few middle schools, some high school, and one opening for a science teacher at Raleigh.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I noticed we have a retiree, and I would just like to recognize Elizabeth Loga from Chalmers Elementary and to, to say happy retirement. And we thank you for your many years of service with the San Antonio higher school system. So congratulations, Elizabeth Loga. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions of Mr. Granberry?
I was gonna say, I was gonna piggyback on Ms. Loga. I've known her since Goche Elementary. She taught my babies. So, you know, congratulations on your retirement.
Anyone else? Here none. Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Appreciate your service. Moving on to item number seven, motion to approve the Head Start request for expenditures of COLA increase. We have Dr. Radwell.
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to come before you tonight. You'll remember that back in March, I came before you with our continuation application for the 1718 school year, which you approved at that, at that school board meeting in March. We recently received a notice that we've gotten a COLA increase for $8,301. And so we're, we're able to take that money. And in, in many programs, the COLA increase represents the only increases that their staff get. And so for us, because our, all of our employees are on a step system, they're getting a yearly increase as we go along. So what we've done, and we've done this in the past, I've come before you, and if you take a look at the, at the information there, the first couple of pages are the, are the forms that, that are required by the federal government. We give you a breakdown of, of our employ, our staff, the Head Start. Now, we're speaking specifically about Head Start. Our Head Start staff, the teachers, their salaries. And because the salaries are well above the national average for the, the regular Head Start teachers and parent professionals across the nation, we ask you to approve our use of the COLA funds to go towards supplies. If you remember, and I'm sure you don't remember exactly, but most of our, our monies from our continuation application went into salaries and benefits. And so we had a limited amount toward supplies. And so we're asking to, we're asking you to approve, and we're asking the federal government to allow us to use this $8,301 towards supplies, which will help our program. So, any questions?
Any questions from board members? Dr. Craft?
I have a motion and we grant that.
A second.
There were motion with Dr. Craft, second by Mr. Warner. Any questions from board members?
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
We'll also be presenting this to our policy council members to get their approval too. And it's due for, to the federal government by June 30th. So after the, the official meeting, we'll submit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Okay, moved item number eight, bid tabulation for Official Journal. Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you. In your package, you have the tabulation for Official Journal for next year, July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018. We're recommending the San Antonio Voice as the Official Journal for next year.
I'll still move.
Okay. Okay, but a motion by Mr. Tysart, second by Mr. Long. Any questions from board members? Dr. Craft?
Mr. Fernandez, the rates are still the same?
I'm not sure. They might run up slightly. This is their quoted rates. They're, they're in the same ballpark. They're in the same ballpark.
Okay. Any other questions? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
We're going on item number nine, bid tabulation for vehicle painting and repairs. Mr. Fernandez.
Okay. Again, we have an annual bid next year for vehicle painting and minor body repairs with tabulation. And we are recommending the low bid, which would be car craft.
Yeah, I see that we just had two bids, then, huh?
Yes, sir.
Do we send them out anymore to different people?
We send them out, but those are the two local businesses that usually bid. I think a lot of the smaller businesses, our business, it might be a little too much for them. Those are the two major companies in the pattern.
These for the buses by now?
Yes.
For the buses. A lot of places don't have some, a facility large enough to bring a big bus in and do the work as well.
Well, the reason why I ask that, because they got some small body shops, you know, they don't realize what the need is for the school system. Right. Thank you, Ms. Foche, for that explanation. Mr. Long, you have a question?
I'm just curious as to, well, the, the two bids are so close, within two bucks, right?
Well, it's, it happens every year. They always close. One of them will be a little lower one year, another the next, you know. But they're usually very close.
Right. We've, we've
We've dealt with both Carcraft and Fidelis, and both of them do an excellent job.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Second? A motion? Mr. Gaines, second by Mrs. Estebado. No other questions? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Item number 10, bid tabulation for gas, diesel, lubricating, oil, transmission fluid, and antifreeze. Okay, Mr. Fernandez.
Yes, sir. Again, this is an annual bid for gasoline and oil and other fluids that the bus garage uses in repairing the buses. Again, we recommend the low bid on every item.
We'll be sitting on to the board with the recommendation.
I'll say it.
A motion by Dr. Craft, second by Mr. Long. Any questions from board members?
I was going to say that the rate's pretty good. I mean, right now, Miro's $2.04 a gallon, so $1.79, it's pretty decent.
Any other questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Going to item number 11, bid tabulation for paper cleaning and custodial supplies. Mr. Fernandez, busy man.
Oh, yes, sir. Okay. Again, an annual bid for paper cleaning and custodial supplies used by our maintenance department, our school custodians, and our cafeterias. There were some items that the vendors did not meet specifications, but we're recommending the low responsive bidder on every item. And those that did not meet specification are noted.
Ms. Lamorne making motion. Second? Ms. Dyso, second? Any comments or questions from the board? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
And as always, thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. England. Next item on the agenda, order superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Loach.
Just want to remind everyone that at the June 27th meeting, we are going to ask the board to announce that at the August 22nd meeting, that the board will consider adopting a resolution ordering the call of an election to be held on November 18th for the renewal of our existing operational millages. So each 10 years, as we all know, those millage resolutions need to be, or millage elections need to be redone. And hopefully, we will renew our operational millages, which are primarily for salaries and benefits, instructional materials and supplies, purchase of new school buses. And we'll have all of those delineated at the June meeting when we make the announcement that we intend to place on that August 22nd agenda. I am motion to consider calling an election in November for the renewal of the operational millages. Okay? And also, I guess, good news in terms of, I know that Ms. Schneider pretty much talked about everything that was happening this summer. But Mr. Warner also reinforced that it's wonderful to look around at our school system and see the, I think, unique and really wonderful experiences that we're offering to our children and community members throughout the summer. The Planetarium, the show at the Cultural Arts Center is going to be phenomenal. The swimming lessons, as he so mentioned. We have our summer skills program. So we have, and we have athletic programs at the high school level. So we have a wide variety of activities. A lot of people think we shut down for the summertime. And to be perfectly honest, that's our busiest time. Not only do we have the programs running for the children, but we're also in there doing the professional development and planning for the upcoming school year. So we're excited about everything happening this summer.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. Anyone else? Okay, is there? Is a motion of Ms. Campbell, is there a second? Second will be Ms. Essevedo. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.